Hello everyone, this is Joanna Jane and thank you for joining another Faith Finance and Her Bible Study. I am so excited that you are here for our seventh Bible study session. Like this has been going on now every other week for some time and we are just really happy that, number one, that I finally had the courage to do this. You know how sometimes when God tells you to do something, you're like, "Are you talking to me? Are you sure? You know, we're gonna be talking about money, God?" And he's like, "Yes, I need my women to understand the points, need to get right." He has kingdom wealth already designed and waiting for us. And part of the reason why that I designed this platform is because women, we are missing out on average about a million dollars, a little bit more than that, over a 30-year time span when it comes to wealth creation. We are the ones that take a break, you know, to have babies, to care for our older parents, sometimes our guardian. It's always tends to be us, right? So we want to make sure that we understand what God's principles says about wealth creation. But I didn't want to just focus on wealth, I also wanted you to be mindful about the faith that it takes to do this. Because let me tell you, if you don't have the faith to step out here and do things that are different from what the society is telling you that you're only able to do, you're gonna fall completely backwards and you don't want that. So I wanted to make sure that we are always talking about faith. So when we started out, we talked about faith for a couple of weeks and now we've transitioned into wealth. But we also want to make sure that we have the her part, right? Like we still need to get ourselves together as women, we need to still work on our heart, on our mind, have conversations, have that girl talk that sometimes others don't necessarily want to talk about, but we still have issues that, that challenge us day to day. It's almost considered like those silent killers, like nobody wants to talk about it. So that's why we have our her section. And tonight, I am extremely, extremely excited and blessed to have none other than Ms. Jennifer Trotter on our platform tonight. She's going to lead us in Bible study. And let me just say this, from what I do know about Jen, she focuses a lot on relationships, but specifically on what it means to be saved and single and to slay, because she know how to wear her well, okay? And I can't, I can't tell you enough that I wish that I would have heard someone like Jennifer growing up when I was dealing with the, well, "You're 25, are you married yet? You're 28, are you married yet? When you gonna have another baby?" Like, you know, I wish I heard someone from the pulpit that was saying, "Let me show you what God's word really says about being single and what it really says about being married and what he says that he is looking for from his women." So I'm really happy to have Jennifer here. I'm not going to talk too much about Jen, I'm gonna let her share a little bit about herself and she's gonna lead us tonight in Bible study. So Jen, I'm gonna turn it over to you and thank you again for being here with us tonight.
I am so excited, thank you so much for having me. Again, my name is Jennifer Trotter and I believe, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I believe that God has graced me to talk about salvation, to talk about sisterhood and to talk about singleness. So I'm a big advocate for Christian single, singleness. Not necessarily want to be single forever, but I believe in us honoring the portion that God has given us right now. So I believe in living in abundance of where we are right now. And I am so excited just to be able to present and to give you what the, what the Lord has given me to share tonight, alright? So let's just go before the Lord in prayer. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we just thank you for this time of gathering. We thank you for keeping us all week long. We thank you for keeping us so far all year long. You are our God, our Father, our King and our Savior. God, tonight, we ask that you will minister to our hearts through your word, Lord God. Let us leave here changed, let us leave here impacted and challenged to do whatever it is that you called us to do. In the name of Jesus, I pray, amen. So, I'm super excited because we're talking about the her portion in finance, faith, finance and her. And the Lord gave me a very back-to-basics word tonight and it is Kingdom Culture. We're going to be in the book of Romans tonight, Romans 12:1 and 2. Romans 12:1 and 2. So I'm gonna go ahead and read, read it in the King James Version and then I'll read it in the Message Version. And it says this, "I beseech you therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, that ye present your bodies as a living sacrifice, holy, acceptable unto God, which is your reasonable service." Number two, "And be not conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind, that ye may prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God." I want to read the Message Version as well. So here is what I want you to do, God helping you. Take your everyday, ordinary life, your sleeping, your eating, your going to work, walking around life and place it, hallelujah, before God as an offering. Embracing what God does for you is, is the best thing that you can do for Him. Don't become so well-adjusted to your culture that you fit in even without asking, even, yeah, even into it without even thinking. Instead, fix your attention on God. You will be changed from the inside out. Unlike the culture around you, always dragging you down to its level of immaturity, God brings the best out of you, develops well-formed maturity in you. Wow, I love the words, I mean, that's, that's just a bomb right there. Kingdom culture. So girl, I want to ask you a question. Are you really doing it for the kingdom? Are you really doing it for the kingdom? We're living in a time where everyone, most, most people, not everyone, is so focused on themselves, their betterment, how to make more money, how to get a promotion, how to have the best family. We live this world on social media where people are low-key comparing themselves to one another, trying to look fancy, trying to have the latest, trying to be the greatest at what they do. And the reality is, all of that is vain glory. None of that, none of that will last. But I want to introduce to us tonight, who are we really doing it for? Who are we really putting it on for? I think young Jesus says, "I put on for my city." The reality, and I want to ask you, are you really putting on for the kingdom? So the definition of culture is the customs, arts, social institution and achievements of a peculiar, of a particular, excuse me, nation, people or other social group. Let's get into the word. So the book of Romans, I love the book of Romans because it's written by Apostle Paul and it's one of his longest epistles. And he basically just gives practical daily application to living. He is writing a letter to the Romans and giving them what to do. He's never been there, but we know just through scripture, he would, the letters would get to these different communities as he was given instructions from the Lord under the auction of the Holy Spirit. So I'm so grateful that Paul wrote it because Paul cannot tell you something that he did not experience. Paul was converted. Paul's former name was Saul and he was a, he was literally persecuting the Christians. He thought that he was doing the right thing, but he was all types of wrong. And he was persecuting the Christians until he had an encounter on the road of Damascus. And he was literally blinded by the, the presence of the Lord. And he called him out and changed his name and made him to be one of the fiercest, I mean, like fiercest revivalists out throughout the New Testament. So I want to first put that little pin in there. As we are kingdom disciples, as we are kingdom women, we cannot tell people to do stuff that we have not already done, right? We cannot go around preaching scriptures at people, being self-righteous, trying to judge people based on their appearance, based on their stories, knowing that we have our own conversion story, right? Knowing that, I don't know about you, I don't, I don't, while it may appear that I live this cookie cutter Christian life, no, the Lord saved me from some real stuff, from some disgusting things, from some things that I can't even tell you about. He really saved me. So when we talk about the scriptures, when we talk about our Christian walk, it needs to come from a place of authenticity and not from a place of judgment. And that's what I love, just even that the writer of this, of this scripture, he's not telling you something that he don't know. He was all types of wrong and now he's telling you, "Hey, I beseech you therefore brethren, I'm telling you, my homegirls, my home, my homies, let's, let's get around and let's really start to be Christians, like we say we are, like we say that we are." So I want to break down some of the wording for us. "I beseech you." This reminds us that Paul appeals to our will. One thing that I love about God is that he is a gentleman and he is not going to force you to do anything. I beg of you, I'm soliciting to you, I'm telling you, I beseech you. God calls us to make a choice about the way that we live for Him. So you can kind of underline if you have your bibles with you. "Therefore brethren," Paul addresses his words, "brothering," letting us know, he's talking about us. He's talking about the community of believers, those who are justified through faith. One of the things that I think that we get frustrated with as believers is when we talk to carnal people as if they're Christians. We can't try to make people think how we think and do what we do when they don't serve the God that we serve. They don't have this type of faith. The reality is, some of the stuff that we say that we're not doing and the things that we abstain from, it's not a part of the real culture. When I tell you that, "No, I don't really smoke that or I don't drink that or I'm not in the club anymore because I am a hip 30-something," that seems that that is strange. But the reality is, I am a new creature in Christ, right? So I can't expect someone who does not have the mindset that I have to believe the things that I believe, okay? Y'all with me? Is everybody with me? Alright, alright. "By the mercies of God." Reminds us that we do this because of the mercy that God has extended towards us. If we think about the mercy that God has, that Paul has extended, has taught us throughout the scriptures from Romans 1 through 11, we talked about, it talks about, and I want you to read it because Romans is really that book. If you are new in the faith, if you just want some practical principles in the faith, Romans is that book for you. It talks about the justification from the guilt and the penalty of sin. Romans 6:9 says, "The wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life." It talks about the adoption in Jesus and the identification with Christ. It talks about placing, we're placed under grace and not the law, given the Holy Spirit to live within us. It talks about the promise of help in affliction. It talks about the assurance of standing in God's election. It talks about the confidence of coming glory. It talks about the confidence of no separation from the love of God, that is Romans 8. It talks about the confidence in God's continued faithfulness. So in all of this, he's telling you, "I beseech you therefore brethren, by the mercies of God." Because God has done so much for us, it just, but I beseech you, I'm letting you know, here, this is what we have. God has already died for you. He has already justified your sin, he has already made the way for you to live this life. So I am beckoning you, "Therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, because of all that He has already given for us, for all that He's already sacrificed for us, that you will present your bodies." Now that's when it gets a little tricky, right? Because if, you know, we're honest or if we are transparent, there are some things that we could do as women that we cannot do spiritually. I always say that there are some things that are permissible in this culture, in this world, that is spiritually illegal. I told you that I am a contender for Christian singles. And while that sounds cute and while we're talking about, "I'm waiting on Boaz and my man and all of that" and while we have all of these great scriptures, there is a great sacrifice that comes with that. That means that your body doesn't belong to any man but God. That means that what you do with your secret parts belongs to God, right? That means that who you decide to lay with, if he is not your husband, it is illegal, right? So I present you, "Therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, that you will present your bodies as a living sacrifice." And I don't want to just talk about sex. And I was really studying the scripture, the Lord reminded me about our entire presentation that needs to be submitted to God, our attitude, the way we respond to people, the way that we talk to people, our body language in the grocery store, right? If we say that we are about the kingdom culture, you can't just pop off every time that you feel like it, right? When you're driving in the car and the person cuts you off, presenting your body as a living sacrifice means you cannot cuss them out. You cannot give them the middle finger. You cannot roll up beside, and I'm telling you, I'm not trying to condemn you, I'm just telling you because I know what Jen used to do. Rolling up beside them, looking at them, mugging them, wishing they would say something. That is not kingdom. How you present yourself in the boardroom should be kingdom. Are you, there are some things, we talk about integrity, but there are some things, there's some business practices that people are doing that, that is not integral. Are you doing stuff under the table when you know that the Lord says that that is wrong? Are you cheating on your taxes? I know this is the Holy Spirit, I know this is the Lord. Are you cheating on your taxes, right? Are you getting, making deals that are, you know, are wrong? Are you meeting, you work for the government, are you meeting with contractors, you know, at different times in the night where you know it's supposed to be during this time? All of that is a part of presenting your body. How are you conducting yourselves on social media, right? Are you in this meaningless banter in the comments? Are you fighting with people on the Shade Room or Instagram? How are you presenting your bodies, even your group chat? Are you picking apart people? Are you screenshotting and, and mulling over people and saying that you are a kingdom citizen? I know I'm kind of going off, but I really, really, we have to get to the basics. If we're going to do kingdom, we really have to do kingdom. Because the reality is, we talk about all of these people being hypocrites and Christians are not saying, you know, doing what they say. It starts with us. How am I a kingdom agent? Every day that I walk outside of my house, I am putting on for the kingdom. I am presenting my body as a living sacrifice. Living sacrifice is hurt, right? I know we have this fanfare now in Christianity, but it hurts. When you really want to do something and it goes against the will of God and he tells you no, it hurts. When you want to make the next move and God has not given you a word and he says, "Wait and obedience," it hurts. When you have to leave that toxic relationship because he's a good man, but he's not a godly man, come on, Holy Spirit, it hurts. Presenting your body as a living sacrifice is not about your will, but it is about the will of the Father, right? We cannot pick and choose which part of the scriptures we want to agree with. This new thing now is, people are trying to use the scriptures to, to have these different types of lifestyles to try to verify, you know, just wack stuff. No, 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 no. Are you doing for your culture or for the kingdom? Even in the church world, these cliques, you know, forgiveness, yeah, forgiveness is about the kingdom, right? Presenting your body as a living sacrifice, how do you treat people when they mistreated you? Who, I know this is the Lord. How do you respond to them when they, when you know that they've lied on you? When they tried to tarnish your name, when they tried to take your client, right? When they tried to manipulate your client list, right? When they're dealing with your contractors behind their back, right? When they're trying to get deals and not tell you about it. I don't even know about, I'm not trying to know about finance, but I don't even know why I'm going there. Like it's definitely the spirit because we have, how do you, how do you deal with that? The people in our family, hallelujah, that have done us wrong and you keep going to the family meeting without speaking, are you presenting your body as a living sacrifice, right? Because it's easy to have these one, two, three things. It's easy to say, "No, I don't, you know, I'm saved now, I'm not having sex outside of, you know, marriage or I'm not doing that." We know how to run down all of the things that we don't do. But what about the posture of your heart? Are you getting up every day asking the Lord, "How can I serve you? How can my life as a living sacrifice serve you? Who do you want me to serve today?" As I go through my route to work, am I supposed to stop and minister to the person? Not even, and we're not even just talking about homeless people, but when you're standing in the cafe or you're standing in Starbucks and you see someone's disposition is wrong, instead of you rushing and trying to get to work, "Hey, hi, how are you? Are you smiling?" I've noticed that women of God are needing, our body language is, "Oh, don't talk to me, don't say nothing to me." As women of God, we don't have the resting be faith, right? We don't. We need to, because we are alike. Matthew 5 and 6 says that we are alike, right? So in order to be alike, and I'm not saying, you know, our personalities are different, but you ought to be glad about something, sometimes. The Lord saved you. You should have a smile sometimes, right? When you walk into a room, does the atmosphere change because you are there? Does the oil of the Lord seep through your pores? Are you, are you an atmosphere shifter when you go into meetings, when you go into work? Can you set the climate, right? In order to bring and to carry the glory of the Lord? It means that we have to present our bodies as a living sacrifice every day, every day. We're talking about, we want to do miracles, we want, we want kingdom wealth, we want all of these things to happen in the name of Jesus, but what are you doing? How are you adding to the equation? It starts with your yes. Oh, that's so good. It starts with your yes. Even if I don't feel like it, even if it goes against my, my, with my emotions, you know, what to do? If it goes against even my, how I'm feeling today, every day, I'm showing up as a living sacrifice for the Lord. Let me keep going. How are you giving yourself, not just what you do, not just what you do? Because we are, we are people of good works. And it's easy for us to run down our resume and to say, "Lord, I did this for you and Lord, I did that for you." And he will say, the Bible says, "The part for me, I, I don't even know who you are because it's not about works." Are you giving yourself to him, right? A part of being, presenting our bodies as a living sacrifice means devotion time, right? Devotion time, every day, every day. In order for him to download instructions to me and to give me a strategy for my day, I cannot have this, all this entire agenda without seeing what he wants me to do. A part of being a living sacrifice means that I need to consult the Lord and what he has me to do, right? So the previous appeal to the will, "I beseech you," means that the will of the master is over the body. "I beseech you therefore brethren, by the mercies of God, that you will present your body as a living sacrifice." The sacrifice is living because it is brought to the altar alive, right? The sacrifice is living because it stays alive, it's ongoing at the altar. And that is so pivotal because it's easy for, I want you to picture you taking an animal and burning it, right? It's moving, you trying to tie it up, that's what they used to do in the Old Testament, the Old Testament. And it was hard to keep them in one place. That is just like us because the burning, the pruning, the things that have to fall off of you as you are on the altar is hard. Your entire world shifts as you become a living sacrifice, right? Because we really find out who's doing it for the kingdom when it comes to our relationships and the things that we do. Toxic relationships burn off when you stay on the altar. When you're in the face of God long enough, hallelujah, it's hard for you to entertain people that are not kingdom, right? Your bad habits, they burn off. Your addictions, those things that go against the will of God for your life burns off because you are living at, on the altar, right? So things that are not acceptable to him, things that go against what he says for your life burns off because you're allowing the purification to happen as you are on the altar. John 15 says that you are, "I am divine and you are my branches and I prune my branches." The pruning in order to grow, it hurts. Everything that he has to burn off of me, the reality is, you've been living in this flesh for X amount of years. You've been doing things your own way for X amount of years. So when you become new in Christ and you get on that altar, that pruning to try to get you growing, that hurts, right? That hurts. That's not, because I think we talk about the scriptures, especially this scripture, as if it's the easy thing. Laying down my will every day is rough. Going back to singleness and talking about, let me just keep it 100, it's just us in a room, it's women in a room. You mean to tell me, in order for me to live for you, God, I can't have sex? Like, I, I'm not getting any, what? Because when we say that out loud to the kingdom, it sounds good because our bodies are wholly unacceptable for him. But to the culture, when one-night stands are easy, where you could just, girl, what you mean? Just go ahead and get you some, do what you gotta do to get your, whatever, no, 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 no. We are not of this world. When it says, "I present you," let me, let me go back because I want to, oh, that's the second scripture. So I'll go to that in a minute. But that means that we're not a part of this culture. So things that I say no to, it's not going to make sense to secular ears, to secular mindsets, right? We were just talking briefly before the call started, we talked about tithing. Tithing doesn't make sense to the secular mind. Giving doesn't make sense to the secular mind because I'm all about my self-gratification, I'm all about the promotion of me, stacking and wealth for me. When, when it's about the kingdom, it's about kingdom legacy. It's about kingdom legacy. So it's not just about me, I'm not, I'm not just doing it for you, I'm doing it for the whole community. Like the finance team and the way that your leader is, she's not just doing it for her, she is unlocking fucking kingdom principles so that the people of God can have wealth, so that we all can win. It's not just about me, it's about the kingdom. So when I say, so to, to, to say that I'm not getting self-gratification or to say that I'm not having sex, it's not just about me denying myself and so that my children can know purity and so that my nieces can know purity and so that the girls that I mentor can know purity, knowing that I don't have to compromise my body to have a relationship. I don't have to compromise the principles of Jesus Christ to get the things that I want because I laid it down. I am a living sacrifice, right? So let's go to the second, oh, scripture. No, the last part, the last part. "Which is your reasonable service." Your reasonable service is a life of worship according to God's will. It's just what you just should do. If we really reflect on all that God has done for us, how he laid down his life, the way that I saw it and how I diagrammed it was that in the Old Testament, we sacrificed animals and we had to, we had a, they had a time in which they will go to the altar. They were purified themselves all year to go and sacrifice the animal, the lamb sometime, yeah, it was usually a lamb, to sacrifice for the remission. It was usually a lamb, um, uh, to sacrifice for the remission of their sins, right? So that's what they did in the Old Testament. That was practices of the Old Testament. Jesus said, y'all can't really, it's not working for y'all. So I'm gonna come down and I'm gonna be the sacrifice for your sins. That's why we here. I'm gonna be the sacrifices for your sins. So we had the animals eat, that wasn't enough. Jesus laid down his life so that we can have life. Now it's time for us to lay down our lives every day as a living sacrifice so that it can be pleasing to God. So if he did it, you can do it, right? If he did it, you can do it. And because he did it, it's just your reasonable service to do it. Like it's just, you just, you just should do it. God has blessed us so immensely. Like he, he, uh, gives us new mercies every day. Grace that we didn't, that we do not deserve. Blessings on blessings on blessings, um, for us. He has made a way for us. He has transformed our lives through his life and through the word of God. The least I can do, the least I can do is lay down my life because he already did it. He's not telling me to do something that he hasn't already did. But I don't have to take the lashes. I don't have to take the whip. I'm literally laying down my spiritual life so that he could live in me, right? Okay, let's go to the second scripture. And be not conformed to this world. When it says this world, it lets me know that there is another world that we should be conformed to. If he's telling me that don't be conformed to this world, that that means that this is not where, this is not where we gonna end up. I am not conforming to this world because I'm looking forward to the, my world in heaven. This is not my home. All that's going on here, this is not my home. Be not conformed to this world because I don't have to conform to this world cause I'm looking forward to that world. I'm looking forward to heaven. Be not conformed to this world, but be transformed by the renewing of your mind that ye may prove what is that good, what is that acceptable? And that perfect will of God. The question that I wanna ask you is how are you resisting the culture of this world? How are you standing out for Christ? When people look at you, do they see the mark of Christ on you? Or do they see someone that has compromised? And I'm not, I'm a little fly, so I'm not talking about the legalisms of clothing or the legalisms of lipstick. I don't, I don't believe in that. I wasn't around here, you know, God bless you if you do, you know, talking about you gotta wear long skirts and all that. No, 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 no. When they look at you, do they see a kingdom citizen? Do the people at your job know who you really work for? That, ooh, do the people at your job know who you really work for, right? Because I am not conformed to this world because I'm looking forward to a new world which will be in heaven. So what I'm going to leave with you, I wanna ask you, I just want to give you a few questions. How can you present your body as a living sacrifice? I want you to think about it, cause I believe that everybody's, um, journey is different. And what I'm giving up now may not be what you're giving up. What I, um, there are things that collectively we probably shouldn't be doing together. But what idols do you have in your heart? That is taking up residence where the spirit of God should reign? Oh, that was good. What idols are on your heart? What are you doing that needs to be laid down? And I believe that as, uh, we are on this call tonight, uh, we're at the 40 minute mark. Well, as we're on this call tonight, I believe that God is so faithful and that he is so sovereign, that he's going to bring things to your mind that you need to lay down. And are you willing to give it up for the king? I don't know about you, but the Lord has blessed me to, um, have a few accomplishments and things in life. But none of that matters when it comes to my kingdom citizenship. What do you need to give up to follow him? Matthew sixteen twenty-four through twenty-six basically tells, he tells disciples, like, you gotta give up everything to just follow me. What are you willing to sacrifice to follow Christ, right? What are you willing not to conform to? Or how have you conformed that you need to lay it down tonight, right? We want to be kingdom women. How are you modeling kingdom citizenship in your relationships? In sisterhood, in dating, in business? And it's your overall presentation. How are you doing it for the kingdom? So I admonish you to read the rest. I'm a little hyper, so I'm sorry if I was yelling, I get passionate, sorry guys. Uh, but I would admonish you to read, um, Romans, especially the 12th chapter. If you go down, it says, um, do not overcome, um, evil with evil, but do it with, um, replace it with good. Romans is such a practical, um, application chapter that gives you, um, the, just the tools that you need for godly living. At the end of the day, my goal is to hear, well done. Well done, thy good and faithful servant. And I know, I believe that how I'm gonna get there is sacrificing my, my, um, desires that don't line up with his, my, even my plans, my will, my body. Like we all had, we're still in that, um, not, well, we're almost in that new year, new me. And everyone's doing a vision board. Did God, was God on your vision board this year? Like, did you consult him for your plans? Everybody wants to be successful and this is my year. But have you laid it all down at the altar and said, God, here are my plans. Now I want your will. This is what I wanna do. Take it and exchange it for whatever it is you want me to do. I want to be your disciple. And I know that this seems like a strong and very basic world, uh, word, but we gotta get back to the basics because we're mixing a whole lot of things with Christianity and it's not holy. He wants us to be holy and acceptable unto God, which is our reasonable service. So I'm asking you tonight to take inventory of your heart. God, show me those areas that need to be sanctified in you. Show me those areas that are not holy. Show me those areas that I need to lay down. Refine me in the, in the fire, on the altar. Refine me, purify, that's a hard prayer. Purify me. When you say purify me, you gotta be willing and ready to give up some stuff. God, whatever it is, I release it. I don't know, I keep hearing like, uh, him. I don't know if it's a toxic relationship. If you want this year to be different from the other years, I, I admonish you. Put that relationship on the altar. Put that relationship on the altar. Put your finances on the altar. Put your friends on the altar, right? Because when it goes on the altar as a living sacrifice, if it does not line up with God's will for your life, it will burn in the purifying fire. All of us want to be refined in the fire. All of us, our goal is to be kingdom. So that's all I have for you tonight, kingdom, culture. Do it for the kingdom, girl.
Thank you, Jennifer. Oh gosh, I was, girl, you lucky I was on mute. You probably wouldn't get through, like, what's wrong with her? You, let me tell you, you hit so many points. I have to be able to give my feedback. And ladies, remember, especially those that are here on, on live with us right now, if there is something that you want to be able to talk about, if you have a question for our guest speaker, do it. Remember this, we should feel like we're sitting in our, our living room with our girlfriend. We're talking about the word of God. This is not, you know, just somebody talking at you. And Jennifer, you've, you really hit on something for me because, you know, sometimes when people hear that I'm doing this major development, the first thing they, they think of is like, oh my God, buy the block. You, you making it, you on. And I'm like, if you only knew that it's ain't nothing but God because the, the bank account don't reflect what's all happening. I can tell people that there has, there has been times where I don't even know how we made it to the settlement table. And others was like, Jesus, how was this all happening? And I know that I'm supposed to be doing this for your kingdom and you had me walk this land for two years, learning that neighborhood, learning a city. And again, as you said, do you shift the atmosphere? And I have had people and the ladies, you know, that are on here know that I've shared a story before and I won't go into it. But I've had $300,000 in invoices exempt from me, not having to pay them because someone said, I see your vision. So when you walk in the room, does it shift the atmosphere? So God said, I need you to buy the block, uh, um, um, partner with the, with the local church, partner with the local school, right? And I'm like, well, how are we gonna do it? Not by sight, don't worry about it because you're gonna be exempt from the architectural plans that you're gonna need to pay, that have to pay for. Don't worry about it, just follow my yes. And we did this and now as it's all coming together, as you were talking here tonight, I said, oh my goodness, it's your, it's your disposition, it's your heart. Yes, the coin is there, but the coin is just a byproduct of being obedient. It's just a byproduct of being obedient. And today, when you were talking about your engagement with people. Now, now people that are watching this, they know, if they know anything about me, you know Joanna Jane today, but my name is Joanna. And if you really know me, my name is Jay. And there's a part of my before Christ life that this engagement that I had with a young lady at the permit office, I went there to go check on my permits and, um, you know, it seemed like the young lady woke up on the wrong side of the bed. And I still kept it pleasant. I said, hi, good morning. She gave me a little grumble with her, good morning. I said, um, you know, I'm here to check on my permits. She, I don't see it's processed here in the system yet. I said, oh, okay. I said, well, can you tell me where does it go first before it comes to your office? I wouldn't know that because I, what, once it's processed, it would pop up in my sys, in my system. So something said, okay. Um, I said, well, you have a great day. I hope that you, um, you have a better day. And she said, thank you. And I left. Now, two years of walking this land, meeting the right people in the housing authority. Something said, Joanna, just go upstairs, talk to the director that you know. Because see, when you are following God's will, he'll put you in the room of decision makers. You don't gotta talk to the secretary. So I said, I went upstairs and I said, you know, um, I wanna check on my permits. I know I just put them in, but I just so happened to be in the building today and I just wanted to see where they are. Let me tell you something, one request, I was escorted back downstairs, sent to a whole nother department, said, look up Ms. Bartholomew. You know it's real, when they said they'd call you by your last name, look up Ms. Bartholomew's documents. Let's see where she is. They said, come back around one o'clock, Ms. Bartholomew. We'll find out, it's, it's probably in zoning, but where you were earlier, they would not have even known the answer. I said, okay, no problem. So I left, went in my, my business, did with some things I had to do in the community, came back. I have never seen a permit process move so fast. I went back, I went into the zoning department. I, I was introduced to the director, the person that oversees and approves permits. He came out, he said, oh, Ms. Bartholomew, your permits are approved. Your link will be sent tomorrow for payment. But if you're just pleasant, now what would've happened if I would've snatched young girl and bought her ponytail? You know, and allowed that other side, that other side to take over? Because guess what? She's gonna see my face again. Cause we buying, we were, we, we are developing a whole neighborhood. So me being nasty to her in this moment, I don't know what may come, you know, later on. And I just share that because as you were saying, it's not just about not having sex. It's not just about not drinking or, you know, not drinking to drunken. It's, it's not just about that. It's about just your engagement with people. And when you talked about the car, girl, I had this, I used to have some bad road. Now, I haven't rolled up with somebody to beat them up, but the, 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 the energy was there, that swerve. You know, so, but thank you so much for sharing.
Girl, I used to be cussing the people out, okay? I used to be cussing them out. And it wasn't to one of my girlfriends in college. I was going off, I was, I mean, I was wanting, and she was like, um, you can't do that. And we both said, I'm like, what you talking about? Don't do that. But it's, it's all, it's all a part of it. It's all a part, cause you don't know who that person is in the car. You don't know their destination. You don't, you just don't know. You just don't know.
Yes, kingdom culture, thank you so much. And, and another thing that I wanna share, when you were talking about, um, knowing the difference between the two worlds and where your ultimate home is. And I had a spiritual, um, I'm not gonna make this a long story, but long story short, I had a spiritual engagement at the presence of God where I went over in prayer. And that feeling is the sweetest feeling ever. It was a, ooh, I don't belong here. Oh, I'm really here temporary. Oh, you've really let me leave you. You let me, you let me as your child leave you to go fulfill kingdom wealth assignment on your behalf? And I gotta come back with my assignment fulfilled? Okay, and that there, once I had that engagement, it was like, I'm not sacrificing this for nobody. So yes, if you're dating me, we're not having sex and you're still gonna take me out and bring me flowers and open up the car door. Yes.
You gonna do it all?
Yeah, absolutely. No, I'm not gonna act a whole fool when I'm going out because I'm representing God's kingdom. I cannot want to teach people, cause I know my, my, my purpose is to provide access and to teach and to be an example of what God's kingdom wealth looks like. I can't do that cutting up, acting a whole fool. And what, and the thing is, what I realized from having that spiritual engagement, that before I wasn't even clearly hearing God. It was like I was in a buffering. I was kind of hearing them, but I couldn't hear the words clearly. So now, no, I don't wanna have sex with you, not really because I don't have the physical desire. I don't wanna cut off communication with God. That's why I'm not having, cause I need to hear him. Because see, all these big things that we doing, I need to know if you want me to buy this house or not buy it. It might be a whole crap going on up in it, I don't know. But I can't afford to cut off my communication with God. So when you surrender those things that have been keeping you bound and you put it before God's feet from the toxic relationships, all of it. We are, I told a gentleman that I'm dating the other day about how this is gonna run. He said, listen, let me pray for you. We can pray together. You're thinking that he's gonna be like, well, listen, um, I can't do that, that's not my twist. You'll be surprised, and ladies, we have the power. I believe it's in, 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 I believe it's in Peter, I believe, where it talks about the power of a woman and how you're, the way that you walk can change how a man is operating. We have the power to do this. So your yes and your amen to God does not, and if, if, you don't ever wanna put that on hold for somebody else, for a man that could easily walk up the next morning after making love to you and go be with somebody else.
Too much on the line.
Too much on the line. And not just for you, as you just said, Jen, for our children's children. Too much on the line. Thank you so much.
We've come too far.
If there's anybody else that wants to share, I know some people came in towards the end, but we were talking tonight about kingdom culture and what it looks like to have a kingdom assignment, a kingdom legacy. Jennifer said a king, when you, uh, when you had kingdom citizenship, that was a word. Kingdom citizenship. So if there's anybody that wants to unmute, either to, you know, make a comment or if you have a question, feel free to do so before we pray and, and, and wrap up. Don't be shy. All right, well Jen, I do have a question and just asking really quickly before you go because, um, you know, this is not an opportunity we're gonna have all the time, having you here with us. If you could share a little bit on the, you know, when people are saying like the, the pressure of being single and what society says that we should be doing as women versus what the word of God says about being single. And I'm not necessarily asking to go into, you know, a whole nother Bible study, but if you could share with us, like what does that, give us some clarity on that. Because I think there are a lot of women that carry the weight, especially right now when, you know, a lot of us are pursuing businesses, we're pursuing, um, additional academic degrees and maybe we're not necessarily putting, you know, the, the, the house, the husband and the wife, you know, the, the white picket fence all at the front like we used to, but yet we're still feeling the pressure of what the world is saying. Like, can you share on that?
Yeah, I, I, yes, absolutely. Um, because the thing is, it's not just the world that's pressuring us, it's even the church. They're looking at us, that you are a certain age and, you know, what's wrong with you? You ain't got no kids, like, are you, you know, do you wanna be married or things like that? Um, 1 Corinthians chapter seven says, in the, um, in the scripture, it says that the unmarried, her, her concern is for the Lord. Um, that everything that we do is for the Lord. Um, dating, my favorite thing is that dating is not a biblical, um, principle. It's a cultural practice. And I think that. And I think that I know that God will never play us concerning our love lives. So if I could give God um, everything else, then I know that I can give him my love life, knowing that he will look after that too. Um, I would say to keep your eyes on God, and I don't want it to sound, cause I'm, I'm not trying to be cliche or, you know, keep your eyes on God. And the person that God has for you will come to run with you and not to distract you from what he has for you to do. I believe that we are supposed to be bosses. We are supposed to be out here um, doing our kingdom assignments. And anybody that comes to align with us has to be in agreement with what me and God already have going on. My first vow is to the Lord. Um, my second vow will be to my husband. So my time here now is to honor my first vow. What do you have for me to do? How should I serve you? What lanes, what people, what community do you have for me to minister to? And he will come along and he will not interrupt what me and God already have going on. He will add to what me and God um, has going on. So I would say to you, don't um, or to just to single women, period, don't worry about what everybody else is doing. Let God establish your relationship goals and find yourself so um, caught up with the kingdom assignments that he has for you to do that you don't, not saying that you don't worry about it because companionship is a natural desire. It is, we are desired, uh, we are um, wired to have relationships. That's how he made most of us, unless you've been called to singleness, like Paul. I wasn't called to be like Paul. Um, I wasn't called to be like Paul, but, you know, we, we desire that. But don't allow what they say interrupt what God says. Because what I do find is that people um, are settling for things to keep up with what everybody else is saying. You are too powerful, you have too much going on. God has too much for you to do to be distracted um, by something that was not sent by him. I say as a women, you know, we are so powerful and our legacy and our future is dependent upon who we agree to be our husband. And it would be a sad thing to be capped off where you were meant to overflow, to have someone come into your life and to stop your pace because you wanted a ring and a party more than you wanted the destiny of God. So that, that's literally my thing, live in abundance. God didn't come for us to do church, he came for us to live abundantly in him. So girl, do, live, do your life in Christ. Do whatever God has called you to do, take the trips, buy the properties, I mean, get it all. Uh, because what God has for you, it, it's too great to settle. It's too great, it's too great. Could you imagine having a husband that literally snuggled your potential because you were trying to meet a deadline? That's the scary part for me. It's not just about when I'm gonna get married, it's being married to the wrong person and all of this, the, the things that God has for me. If I get strangled, I'm suffocated because I, I chose the wrong partner to lead me. Where are you leading me to? Are you gonna continue my walk with destiny? Or you gonna have me going on to the deep? So I don't wanna keep, I don't wanna ramble, but it, it's so important to keep your eyes on God and, and must tune out the noise, cause people, they'll be at your wedding, but they won't be at the divorce settlement. So you wanna make sure that I am aligned with what God has for me um, because I wanna please him ultimately. Ultimately, the goal is well do, well done, and not just I do.
Amen, amen, amen. And you were just partially up in my world, amen. Um, if there are no questions, you know, we are going to ask you, Jennifer, to close us out in prayer. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I ask that God continues to be an overflow of blessings on your life, on your platform, on your ministry, that every mic that you touch, there is a soul that's changed because you said completely yes. And I understand that it is not easy, but honey, I am holding your hand from a distance. Call me anytime, inbox me anytime. If it's like, girl, I need prayer, I don't need to know your business, but let's just go to God and pray. So thank you for being here, being a part of our first faith and finance segment. Uh, we are wrapping up in, in, in a couple of weeks, actually, uh, it's actually gonna be in May, I'm not in May, in April. So thank you for being a part of this journey with us. And let's, let's stay connected, ladies. Um, Jennifer, if you could share with them where they can follow you, if they want to be a part of any events, any conferences that you're gonna be affiliated with, if you can share that and then you can go to, um, go to God and pray.
Okay, cool. So you can follow me at Jennifer Trotter on Facebook and at Lady Inspiration on um, Instagram. I'm just, I don't wanna go into the different things that I'm part of, cause it's just a lot going on. But partner with me, I love, I love sisterhood, like that, I really believe that we were not created to be um, isolated, but that together, your part and my part and her part can build something amazing in the kingdom. Um, and we need a shoulder um, to lean on. So yeah, that's how you can find me. Thank you again for having me, I'm just so blessed, I was so nervous. Uh, I'm so blessed to um, share this platform with you. So let's just go to the Lord in prayer. Father.
Thank you.
In the name of Jesus. Lord, we, we thank you and we honor you, God. We thank you for the reminder that we are your living sacrifices, God. Lord, I ask you tonight that anything that I was saying um, be for your glory in the name of Jesus. Anything that we need to give up, before we go to bed tonight, that you will bring it to our remembrance, Lord, God. Ultimately, we want you to be pleased with our lives in the name of Jesus, God. Whatever thing, whatever we're holding on to that we need to let go of, God, I ask that you will give us the strength and the courage to let it go. Because there is nothing that you would take from us that you won't give us better for it. So God, I ask you tonight that you will sanctify our hearts, that we will be kingdom women for you. Give us um, the boldness to share our testimonies. Help us to create other disciples for you in the name of Jesus. God, I ask that you will increase this platform, um, that whatever goals that this, this community has, that they will reach them because of the yes that they have committed to you, Lord, God. Lord, we honor you, we honor you, and we thank you for your word. Is in Jesus' name that I pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, ladies, for joining. Thank you, Jennifer, for being our guest Bible study leader today. And um, have a blessed one, everyone, have a safe night. If you're on the road, get home safely and.
Thank you. Thank you, I really enjoyed it, I really enjoyed it, I wanna make sure I get that in, thank you.
Thank you. All right, bye bye.
Bye bye.